Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November 10th regular meeting of the St. Charles County Council. We will start out tonight with an invocation. Is Pastor Justin Yerby in the audience? Justin Yerby, last call. All right, so we'll have an invocation by me. And how about that? And pledge of allegiance by Council Terry Hollander, Councilman Terry Hollander. Would you please stand and remove your caps, please? Joe, I'm in prayer. Father, we just pause before you for a moment tonight just to take a breath, calm down from the hecticness that is our world these days, and just ask your blessing upon this meeting tonight. I know it says in your word that if we ask you for wisdom, that you're faithful to grant that request. So we ask you tonight, as we consider these things who are before us, if you please give us your wisdom as we go through these deliberations. Help us to be mindful of each other, be respectful with each other, hear each other, and seek your will in making our decisions. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Please call the roll.
Councilman Swanson, Councilman Brazel, Councilman Hammond, Councilman Elam, Councilman Hollander, Councilwoman York, Councilman Baker.
Here.
We start off tonight with public comments. You'll have three minutes. That clock will change to three minutes. You'll have three minutes there. And then, once it gets down to three minutes, I'll thank you for speaking, and we'll move on to our next speaker. Our first speaker tonight is...
Amy Robertson regarding emergency weather response.
Hi.
Good evening. I come to you this evening as a member of the C A B, but my comments are mine, just to be clear. Currently, St. Charles County has just under 750 unhoused citizens. The biggest demographics of that 750 are in the ages of zero to nine years of age and 10 to 19 years of age. That means that we have children who are also without homes. They are staying in storage units, they are staying in their vehicles, they are staying in extended stay hotels, and yes, we do have children who are, in fact, camping even as the temperatures are what they are now. Currently, the county's five-year plan for emergency weather response is that no individual will die of heat or cold exposure. So death is our bar, and it's pretty low. And as of right now, as I'm speaking to you, we do not currently have the funding in this county to fund fully our emergency weather response, nor do we have facilities to take our unhoused people to when they reach out. Emergency weather response happens when temperatures drop below 20 degrees and after 9:00 P. M. We try to give them a warm place to stay so that they don't succumb to the temperatures. Things that are exacerbating this issue, number one, I don't think it's a secret, but SNAP is not happening. With SNAP not happening, our charities are spread very, very thin, with people who are now not only seeking ways to pay for their housing, but they are also without food. And so that has been a big problem. Also, our funding to the community council has gone down. So we're being asked to do significantly more with significantly less, and the math just does not math. A huge hit that the county took is that Salvation Army Shelter is no longer a shelter. So as of right now, as I'm speaking to you, St. Charles County does not have a shelter for children, families, or anyone to go to on a regular basis. Meaning, the funding that we do have, if we don't find shelter when the E W R happens, is going to be spread even more thin because our only choice will be things like extended stay hotels for people who are unhoused. I'm asking for some action items as a result of these concerns. The first one is, you are all individuals who happen to have a platform and people who follow you who are eager to know what is going on and how they can help. I have found that just by putting things out on my personal social media, we are managing to bring in some significant donations, and I'm asking that you, as our leaders who are here to care for all of us, use yours. I'm also asking you to add this issue to the next agenda for your work session and really discuss non-taxpayer-funded solutions. And then also, I'm asking if you would please reach out to people like me who are willing to give you more information. Invite someone from community council to come, whatever it may be, but we want to keep you informed so that you can inform your constituents. And Councilman Hammond, I emailed you a while back and haven't heard back my offer to come out and learn a little bit more about SNAP recipients over lunch. Lunch is on me if you'll join me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lester Neal regarding the Lake St. Louis Boulevard extension.
Got rid of the big walker this time.
Congrats.
Anyway, good evening, members of the council. My name is Les Neal. I am here tonight to speak against the Lake St. Louis Boulevard extension project from Paul Renaud to Highway DD. This is a project that was envisioned around 2005 as part of the county's transportation improvement plan. And since then, there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of misinformation about the project. On October 23rd, the city of O'Fallon finally held an open house about the project. There were representatives from O'Fallon, St. Charles County Highway, U.S. Corps of Engineers, D N R, and a whole bunch of other people. During a recent O'Fallon Council workshop, we asked the O'Fallon engineers about the feedback. They said 70% of the people that attended that open house were against this project. As I was leaving the open house, I was interested to hear members of St. Charles County Highway staff state that the roadway was really a bad plan. It was kind of interesting to be walking out behind them and overhear something that they talked up during the meeting. We've asked our aldermen in O'Fallon to work to cancel the project. Their response has been, "We don't want to do that because St. Charles County would withhold future transportation funding." I don't know if that's true or not, but that's been the response that we get from our elected officials. The original plan was for the roadway to run along the old Curtis Lane, which is actually a gravel road. The actual plan shifts the roadway several hundred feet and splits the common ground that's owned by Preston Woods H O A. And that's primarily for engineering reasons, and there's a Corps of Engineers restricted area right along that. There's a lot of unknowns. Residents are worried about the impact of when it rains too much, where's the water going to go? There's a natural stream that the roadway is going to disrupt. Who's going to assume liability if somebody gets hurt on this multi-use path that is on a right-of-way that's dedicated for the exclusive use of the subdivision? This project will destroy our natural and serene walking path and replace it with an urban concrete roadway. It'll just change the look and feel of all of our subdivisions. It's my understanding that Councilman Baker is working to find some legislation to remove the funding for this and reallocate it to other projects. And I'd like to just ask that each of you support any efforts by Councilman Baker or anybody else to cancel and kill this unwanted and poorly planned project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rob Voss on the Lake St. Louis Boulevard extension.
My name's Rob Voss. I am also speaking about the Lake St. Louis Boulevard extension. The Lake St. Louis Boulevard Phase III extension project is nothing more than a Band-Aid fix for the traffic problems in western St. Charles County. The proposed roadway would run north and south through busy neighborhoods full of pedestrian activity and through acres of beautiful park-like greenscape. This area desperately needs east and west thoroughfares to connect homeowners to work and businesses in the greater St. Charles and St. Louis metro areas. Furthermore, this proposed roadway comes at over two and a half times the cost per mile to build than the county average cost per mile of construction. The area impacted is critical to watershed and to drainage to the surrounding lakes, creeks, and high ground, areas which are already prone to flooding in part due to the increase in housing and pavement in the area. Also, the impacted area serves as a nature sanctuary to the five neighborhoods in the immediate area enjoyed by thousands of residents. This may be a little bit repetitive from what Les spoke, but it is home to all manner of wildlife, a natural spring, a walking nature trail, and a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers protected wetland area. So this Band-Aid fix will not permanently fix traffic flows in the area. It is the wrong place to put a Band-Aid. Highway N, for example, will provide a much higher impact to the traffic concerns of the area. Myself and hundreds of other citizens urge you to reallocate these funds to higher-impact projects and provide a proper way to cultivate smart growth in western St. Charles County. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Stephen Doak regarding Lake St. Louis Boulevard extension.
He covered whatever the county was saying.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Stephen.
Dennis Evans regarding Bill Number 5438.
I come before you tonight as a citizen of St. Charles County, long-term, been here since mid-'80s. But I come here mainly to represent a group of folks I worked with back in the '90s, in the mid-'90s. I served on the county's Master Plan Committee for Open Space. I served on a, the same group basically worked with the consultant that developed a master plan for the county for parks and recreation. I also served with the group, the Use for Parks Fund. Councilman York, you're familiar with that one?
I am.
And I was also on the original advisory board for the Parks Department. I come before you tonight representing all of those other individuals I've worked with that spent numerous hours, time, personal time, taking away from their family and things like that to get us where we are today, to establish a foundation that has proven over time to be a good foundation. I want to leave you with a visual reference. And Councilman, or Councilwoman York, you'll remember this one, right? This sits in my office, or is hung on the wall in my office. This yard sign contributed to what we have today as a Parks Department. Please, this bill you have before you tonight, I speak for everyone that worked towards this, I feel, it's going to be a crown jewel to what we worked for way back then. So we appreciate it. This was an effort driven by citizens. We developed both plans. We went out, how do we impact those plans? We got the tax money for it. So please consider that. I don't anticipate a problem since the council as a whole is supporting this, but just realize, this is a significant step or a crown jewel for what we worked for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rose Zuck regarding Trailside and Menchur Farms.
So I'm going to look this way.
That's fine.
With my pointer. I have, but I can't read that. On the original plans, they had 100 townhomes. They have reduced it to 87. And I got this from the county planner and also the St. Louis Business Journal. The homes were reduced to 383. Those are all the homes. Those right there are the townhomes. Up here is the commercial lots. Right here, where all my arrows go, they're calling that common ground at 57 acres. My question to the planner was, why is 17 acres from the church still included in the original 255 acres? It sounds like a great place to put a development, but when you subtract the roadways, the 57 acres for common ground, you come up to 151 acres for 383 homes. But if you also subtract the 17 acres from the church, you're now down to 103 acres for 383 homes. So they're not even reaching two homes per acre. They're probably worth in past four, four homes per acre. And we're just looking for not such a high density for a subdivision. Smart growth is not against development, we're just against the density that they're putting in. And that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Chapman regarding Highway N, Trailside, and future subdivisions.
My name's Mary Chapman, and I live directly across from Sankey Anna's Church, which is next to the future subdivision Trailside. And I just found out about this a week ago. I was wondering if the county was supposed to send me a letter since I'm within the thousand-foot range of a development and notify me at any point? I never received that letter. I just assumed that was a policy because it was, you know, 20 years ago. But I took some video the other day of the traffic, and when I was out there shooting the traffic all the way down towards the Lutheran church from the Catholic church, it was at a dead stop. And a gentleman rolled his window down and said, "This sucks." And I said, "Go to the county, you know, do something." And I mean, from what I understand, so if you guys turn this down, then Winsfield could snatch it up. And they don't have the ethics of the plan that you all have in place. It's the same with O'Fallon. They tend to do what they want, so to speak. But from, I've heard two points of view on the sewer situation, the Duckett Creek, that Winsfield couldn't actually annex that property because they wouldn't have the sewage capacity. And then if St. Charles allows this project to go forward, it would, the sewage would have to, I guess, be taken through another property that is, I believe, considered a 100-year-old farm. So, or in that range of 100-plus-year-old farm. So about a year and a half ago, I spoke to somebody on MoDOT when I found out that, you know, MoDOT was working with St. Charles to do this expansion. And I was like, "Well, I knew that was coming, and that's fine." But then they're talking about these roundabouts that would make it like Highway 109, which is, to me, atrocious. I mean, I can understand one or two, but to put four in? And he said, "Don't worry about that. That probably isn't going to happen for five to 10 years down at your end because they don't have the funding." Well, if they don't have the funding, why are they allowing, why are, why would the county, why would Winsfield, why would O'Fallon, anybody bring infrastructure or bring the homes in without the infrastructure of the roads? So I mean, I don't think that, there's got to be some way where the county can work with these other cities and to get them to negotiate. Let's use common sense for the people because the people are really upset. I've got 13 seconds. 12, I'll let you go on that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Arnie Dinoff regarding consent agenda items.
Good evening, members of the county council. Want to talk about a few things. First of all, under parks, which the airport, I don't understand how you can make that fall under the Parks Department, but we need to watch our spending at the airport. $4 million in a heavy floodplain. Are we going to get our return on investment? And I want to make sure that we watch all of our spending out there. We have a full-time director, which I'm not sure exactly what the guy does out there with a full-time assistant. I'm not exactly sure what their job responsibilities and duties are. There's some change orders, number one, for Goodemuth Road Phase III, and also drainage and erosion control at Heritage. These bidders end up to be the top and the worst bidder rather than the least and the best bidder after all their change orders. The zoning adjustment decision application for the school and unincorporated, I ask that you turn down substitute Bill Number 5431. Private sewage disposal for Bill Number 5438, is this to make a county council member more lucrative? Is this bill special legislation for one county council member, in particular Joe Brazel, or is this for countywide? Are we advocating to go to one-acre parcels over three-acre parcels, which would require a private sewer disposal system? And the whistling wings on Houston Road, 870 acres, we have to design a $2 to $6 million, 6,000 square foot community and education center. What about the operations? What about the liability of the duck club in the shooting area if somebody gets hurt? And as a matter of fact, Exhibits A is only one is part of this. Exhibit B, C, D, and E are missing from the agreement. And... I have my other paper somewhere else here. Anyways, there were some disparaging remarks made back in October by Dave Hammond. Dave Hammond gets $85,000 in taxpayer money in his pension and social security. He gets 21,000, he gets $21,415 in a county council salary, and Medicare is not good enough for him, and he gets better health care than 98%, than 98% of county residents across the county. It costs taxpayers $25,000 to fund health care for him and his wife because he gets better health care than our citizens do, our senior citizens. But yet, he wants to, he gets a $60 cell phone bill, he gets a expense account, he gets mileage reimbursement, he gets county council staff, he gets an office in this building, and I could go on and on about what he gets. But he wants to attack SNAP benefit people, people who are working-class families in St. Charles County who need a hand up and who need something to get through before they can get out of their hole that they're in. And so I would challenge Mr. Hammond to donate $1,000 cans to a food shelter.
Your time has expired, sir.
Thank you.
The final speaker.
Mercifully, thank you. That'll get us to the oral report. Sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think Mike Summer is going to give you a kind of an overview of the budget, but before he gets up there, just a couple comments. First of all, with regard to the unhoused.
Yes.
I think you made us aware of that this morning and several other folks, and of course, we'd already submitted the budget, but we're certainly going to ask you to go ahead and approve probably $30,000 in emergency, in emergency aid.
Thank you.
And we'll have that for discussion at one of our sessions. The other thing, of course, all we're concerned about highway, about Highway N, if you remember, we had a presentation on what Highway N's going to look like. We also, last month, got approved for a special grant, a Great Streets project at East West Gateway. So they're going to look at it as a Great Streets project where we could get some additional benefits. And our, again, our goal is to get that funded in the transportation plan that'd be coming up in January at East West Gateway. So I'm going to ask the person at East West Gateway that does the Great Streets to come out probably the next meeting and talk about how that could not only help this be a better project, but get it done quicker.
Excellent. Yeah, it's definitely a priority for everybody on the council. Mr. Summer?
Mr. Summer.
I believe this is your first time to get to do this with the council.
First time for the annual budget, second time to have the honor of being in front of you.
Thanks, Mike.
Pretty low bar. So tonight, the executive office has asked me to do an overall view of the annual budget that was presented to you as a county council last week. You probably have your 400-page document that you received, plus it's also available to you electronically. It is on the county website under the Finance Department if you have any questions or are not able to locate your physical copy. So just to kind of begin with, as an overall view, remind you that the index for this particular budget, you can be filed on Pages One and Two. And if you're interested, the budget for the county council is on Page 50. That might be of some interest to you. And then, all funds summary, that's a lot of questions that we normally get asked, can be found on Page Four. If you want to know what all the revenues are and all of the expenditures are, not only for the general fund, but all funds for St. Charles County. And then, just for the general fund, you're going to find that on Page Five, showing once again the revenue and expenditures for the general fund for St. Charles County. And then, all the special funds begin on Page 149 for the year 2026. Once again, this year, the goal for the county was to make sure that we have a 10% fund reserve for the general fund, and that has been achieved once again. And that's in addition to the 3% statutory reserve that's required on top of that. I want to remind all of you that this past year, during the summer months, you did approve the capital program and strategic plan. But keep in mind, that is just a plan, and it is not funded until you, as a county council, approve this annual budget that is in front of you this evening. One thing you're going to notice is if you turn to Page Six, you'll see that the adult use marijuana sales tax has not been budgeted for the year 2026. As you know, there was a recent Supreme Court ruling here in the state of Missouri that unfortunately, we can no longer collect that sales tax, which was coming to about $2 million a year. Over the 26 months that we were able to collect it, we did, as a county, collect $3.6 million that we may have to refund in the future. And that is part of the general fund that you see in front of you this evening. Also, I want to remind you that our general fund is very much sales tax-driven. There is no property tax for the county as a whole included in the general fund. Two-thirds of our general fund does come from sales tax that's collected here in St. Charles County. So I do want to encourage you and everybody else to make sure when you shop, make sure you shop in St. Charles County at the brick and borders. Our general fund, we did budget for 2026, 2% over the prior year, which is the same as what we have done in the past, 2% over the prior year. The budget in front of you this evening does include a 2% merit raise for our employees. It also does include a 2% cost of living adjustment. And just so you know, a lot of times I get asked, "Where are the total expenditures that you can find for St. Charles County?" And for you, that can be found on Page Four, which shows total personnel expenses for all funds. I want to let you know that for 2026, there is a logger's increase for next year. There is no change in the plan, but there is the requirement of additional funding by the county. So this budget in front of you does include a 1% increase in the police contributions. It will be going from 12.5% to 13.5%. And then, for the general employees, that will increase by 0.9%. Contribution rates are going to increase from 10.8% to 11.7%. Also included in this budget, you will see that the match for the 401A plan that the county contributes to is going to increase by 1/4 of 1% for 2026 for our employees. So what used to be a 3.5% contribution now becomes 3.5%. And for other employees, what is a 4.25% will become 4.5% for next year's 2026 budget. For this budget that you have in front of you, there was the request for 14 additional employees for the county. Included in this budget, though, that's recommended, is only 6.2 employees. And four of those 6.2 do have direct funding sources. They're not in the general fund. The other thing is that the only positions in this particular budget that have been reclassified is those within the corrections, and those are the correction officers. Other positions have been deferred, and we will look at that again in mid-2026 to see if the funding is available for those possible reclassifications. Also, I want to remind you that the county is self-employed, and that can be found on Page 384. All additional health costs for our employees for 2026 is being paid for by the county. There is no additional cost for next year for our county employees. And as you probably saw in the budget provided to you, both the Parks and Recreation Fund on Page 207 and the Transportation Highway Fund on Page 162 are well-funded. And then, the final thing to remind you is that ARPA funds, which are included here in this budget, have to be fully spent, and they must be fully spent, by the county by the end of 2026. So that is an overview of the budget in front of you. I know a few of the county council members have already presented some questions to the administration. Tonight, I believe, there's no discussion, but we will have work sessions, both at your next November meeting. next November meeting and your December meeting, and we will go from there. So I appreciate your time this evening.
Can I have a question? So you, you said you withhold ten percent of us like a, like a, just like a cushion? Is that correct?
The goal is always to have, to make sure that we have a ten percent reserve in case...
How much money, dollar-wise, is that?
I, I don't know off the top, but we can get that information for you, definitely.
So i- in the past, let's say, five years, have we had to get into that reserve?
As an employee of less than one year, I'm gonna turn around.
No.
Bob is shaking his head no, so we have not had to.
So if this council wanted to use that, for, say, some of that for stormwater, we could certainly do that and lower that to five percent and still be, what, thirty million?
Uh, the recommendation...
Ten percent is about sixty million if I'm correct, right?
Our county budget, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, county budget.
So part of the problem that you're gonna have with that is some of what's in that fund is the three point eight million dollars that we're gonna owe the state back because of the marijuana tax.
Okay.
So right off the bat.
So fifty-seven.
And the, the percentage that we have in the reserve fund is directly reflective of how our bond rating is. So we're gonna have to borrow any money in the future on the bond market, for instance, when we redo City Hall, then to make it the core annex. If we lose our double A plus, I believe is where we are, bond rating, the cost of money to us will increase.
Okay. The other thing I want to remind you is, two-thirds of our general fund is sales tax-related, and for the first six or seven months for this year, for 2025, it was virtually flat. So it's now starting to social progress, so that may be another reason why we may not be able to do what you've requested.
But we also have money that we budget for employees that we never fill. I mean, because we can't, we can't fill all these employees, so there's money for that. What happens to that? That just gets rolled over in next year's budget?
We, we hope they're able to fill it, but sometimes there are funds that are rolled over.
Yeah, I mean, so I, I know we didn't have a stormwater work session, but I, I want to still have it, and, and this is a lead into that.
Yeah, so if you have any specific questions, my recommendation would be to go ahead and send those to administration, and it is very helpful if you include the page number.
I'll be doing that.
That you're looking at.
I do want to ask a clarifying question.
Absolutely.
So Mr. Baker is under the impression that our budget is six hundred million dollars. That includes two hundred seventy-two million dollars worth of rollover funds that are there. Can you explain a little bit about what rollover funds are? I mean, I know a hundred fifty-five million dollars of that is road funds that are road projects that are in process, but they're not gonna be done in 2025, so those are gonna be rolled over. I know we have over eighty million dollars in other projects that are doing the same thing, but can you, I think I just sold a little of your thunder.
Yeah, that's fine. Now, the Highway Department is a great example of projects in process where the funding may have been received, but it will not be completed until 2026. Parks Department is another great example of projects that are in process. There's probably some ARPA funds in there that has been received and have to be spent down by the end of the year. So yes, if you count the carryovers, there are six hundred thousand, but as you look at the general fund...
Six hundred million.
Six hundred million. It's only zeros, they're not worth anything.
That's true, right.
But you'll see that it was a very tight budget there, and we had to struggle to get to where we are to make sure that we had that ten percent reserve.
So I think if you look at our true budget, you're closer to three hundred twenty-five to three hundred fifty million, depending on how you want to count, because road board money, even though it shows a hundred percent county, we split that money, fifty percent's us, fifty percent is municipality, so we're kind of holding their money, if you will, as the road projects.
So we're looking at ten million dollars that we're holding, if it's ten percent?
About, yes, about. Yeah, we'll get to the exact number.
And keep in mind that three hundred twenty-five million dollars does include all special funds that are restricted on how they can be spent.
So our actual general fund is...
Is about sixty-three each year, plus the rollover from unspent from the previous year.
So when you're looking at, that's our true sort of what we control money that's gonna be funded with the sales tax part of it.
If I could just get that number.
You want a dollar amount?
Yeah, dollar amount, that would be awesome.
We can do that.
And, you know, and again, this will lead into the discussion that unfortunately, we didn't have last council meeting because I was out of town, couldn't prepare, but...
It's okay.
We need to, we really need, we got people that every time it rains, they, they grit their teeth because their homes are flooded, and like I said, it's, a lot of it's due to what I feel is poor management by the county back in the eighties and nineties when we approved subdivisions with deficiencies that we allowed home builders to get away with. Now we're stuck with it, so we need to do something. So thank you, Mike.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you.
Counting executive, anything further?
No, sir.
With that, that'll get us to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Motion to approve from Mr. Brazel, second from Mr. Hammond. All those in favor?
Aye.
On the opposed, the consent agenda is approved. That gets us to bills for final passage, starting with substitute bill fifty-three thirty-one.
Substitute bill number five four three one, an ordinance reversing the Board of Zoning Adjustments decision on application VAR twenty-five dash zero three A.
I guess I jumped the... Mr. Hovind.
Yeah, I need to, I need to make a motion to amend bill number fifty-four thirty-one with substitute bill number fifty-four thirty-one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So in terms of discussion, you may remember, can I borrow that?
Sure.
You may remember in our last meeting, we already voted on this, and we overrode, we changed the Board of Zoning Adjustment and allowed them to have their lights on the soccer field. So what we have to do now, by the way our UDO is written, is we have to go back and put this substitute bill in that basically says we're upholding what we did in the last meeting. Is that a fair comparison? Thank you. So in this one, unlike the last one, where a yes was a no and a no was a yes, this is back to regular world where a yes is a yes and a no is a no, and things get to be a whole lot easier. I know it's a weird thing to say, hey, didn't we already do this? Yes, we did, but the way our code is written, and I know Mike Carlebert and Community Development is working on fixing things just like this that happens to be in our code, and they are in the process of putting that together. So if you say this is strange, it is, but that's where we're at right now. And I think we need to get...
We're gonna need five.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna need five on this, so I want to wait for Mr. Brazel to get back. It's all good.
Talking of COVID, getting some medicine.
All right. So all those in favor of adopting the substitute bill?
Aye.
All those opposed, would you please call the roll?
Substitute bill number five four three one, an ordinance reversing the Board of Zoning Adjustments decision on application VAR twenty-five dash zero three A. Councilman Swanson, Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman York.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Bill fifty-four thirty-one is passed, and hopefully, we won't be dealing with that in the next meeting again. We'll get to bill fifty-four thirty-five this time.
Bill number five four three five, an ordinance amending section four zero five point five zero zero point B point four of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri regarding wastewater disposal regulations and private sewage disposal systems.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five four three five, an ordinance amending section four zero five point five zero zero point B point four of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri regarding wastewater disposal regulations and private sewage disposal systems. Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman York.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Bill fifty-four thirty-five passes, that gets us to bill fifty-four thirty-six.
Bill number five four three six, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental surface transportation block grant agreement STBG dash seven three zero two seven two five with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Towers Road Asphalt Overlay Project.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Mr. Baker?
John, do you mind, could you, I got a question for you, just... So I know this has got federal funds in it, and federal funds require there to be a bike path. Can you explain what, what the Highway Department's position in or how you're gonna proceed with the bike path that's gonna be on this project?
Well, we know there's been, you know, community pushback on having any sort of road diet out there that would eliminate the turn lane, so that's our goal right now, is to try to maintain the turn lane and figure out a way to get the bike path in there, whether that be some sort of a share road or getting it off the pavement altogether, that's...
Is there room to just add a, I mean, keep, keep the three lanes and add a bike path on one side, maybe? I mean, I know when we, when we seen Dingle Dine, it was two five-foot bike lanes, which...
Yeah, I mean, you really need two-way traffic for the bike lane.
Okay, well...
So yeah, we're gonna have to figure out some way to provide two-lane traffic. I think, to answer your original question, yes, you could probably get one on there and keep three lanes, but you wouldn't be able to get the second direction, so...
So they're requiring two bike lane, bike, bike?
Well, you just, it's a bike lane with two-way traffic, so we, we gotta figure out how to get the two-way traffic in there somehow, so like I said, either, I don't think we're gonna get it on there delineated, so we could do share roads, or we could, yeah, try and get it off somehow.
Okay, because the federal government thinks we need bike paths everywhere, okay.
In, in this case, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five four three six, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental surface transportation block grant agreement STBG seven three zero two seven two five with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Towers Road Asphalt Overlay Project. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman York.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson, Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Bill fifty-four thirty-six passes, that gets us to fifty-four thirty-seven.
Bill number five four three seven, an ordinance authorizing execution of amendment number two to Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement Airport Improvement Program Grant Project twenty-four dash one 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 A dash one CFDA two zero point one zero six for the runway improvements and the Construction Administration Services of CMT, the engineers of record for this project for a runway pavement mill and overlay project at St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart Field.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five four three seven, an ordinance authorizing execution of amendment number two to Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's State Block Grant Agreement Airport Improvement Program Grant Project twenty-four dash one 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 A dash one CFDA two zero point one zero six for the runway improvements and the Construction Administration Services of CMT, the engineers of record for this project for a runway pavement mill and overlay project at St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart Field. Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman York.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson, Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes. Bill fifty-four thirty-seven passes, that gets us to fifty-four thirty-eight.
Bill number five four three eight, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a public-private joint cooperation and development assistance agreement and other related documents and furtherance of the creation of the Jay and Carolyn Hedges Wetland Park and Education Center.
Any questions or comments about this bill?
I'll make a comment. I, I bring in two different groups of people that have nothing whatsoever to do with a lot of things, but they stopped me and commented about this and said they couldn't believe that we were able to somehow maneuver this and get this, this done. They just braved about the area and, you know, what we're gonna be able to do with this, this piece of land, so again, that's, that's something that, you know, just, just came up, and I said, well, thank you, I think it's a, well, there was a lot of work by a lot of people to get this done, a lot of patience.
Any other comments about this?
Yes, kudos to the staff for working through this.
I would echo those thoughts. This is really a great job to be able to put this together, and I can't believe that we got it done either.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank some people too, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna thank them until you all vote.
Speaking of which, please call the roll.
Bill number five four three eight, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a private, a public-private joint cooperation and development assistance agreement and other related documents and furtherance of the creation of the Jay and Carolyn Hedges Wetland Park and Education Center. Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman York.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson. Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes. Bill fifty-four thirty-eight passes, Mr. Counting Executive.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you all for supporting the bill, and thanks to the people sitting next to me here. We've got a great lawyer, we've got a great director of administration who knows how to negotiate, okay? And then we've got a assistant director of administration knows something about ducks and conservation and, and also parks. So between the three of them, and it wasn't easy, they, they worked all this out, and there's two other parties involved, so it wasn't easy, like I said, but thanks to them for all the work they put in, and thanks to you for supporting it.
Yes, too, our director of parks for his support of this, because this is a novel endeavor, and just as he had a novel endeavor at the NEC, he's very up to it and, and is ready to take this on.
We cared so much about this that we drove six hours down to Memphis trying to make it, make it work a couple of years ago, and now it finally has.
You drove to Memphis?
Yeah.
And you made it back alive, that's good. Ryan, is this our largest park?
Yeah.
Seven hundred eighty-five acres, that is, that is a lot, so congratulations, it's really is, I agree, it's gonna be a jewel in our Parks Department, and it, it's something that is really unique, and we're very lucky to have that, so congratulations to everybody who made that work. That gets us to bills for introductions, starting with bill fifty-four thirty-nine.
Bill fifty-four thirty-nine, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance approving an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for fundy of safety improvement to reduce crashes on St. Charles County roadways.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Yes, sir.
Amanda, what, what exactly are we gonna do to, I mean, is this, are these road improvements? These IT stuff, or what?
She has been wanting to jump up here all night.
Yeah, she's been running. I think there are twelve roads on the application, and I can send you what those road segments are, but basically, it's, it's kind of systemic safety improvement, so we're looking at high-friction treatments on the surface where there's like runoff the roads or curves. We're looking at some wider edge lines, again, for the curves, some signing, just some different things in different places that all kind of makes sense to reduce the crashes on these roadways, and they're all high-crash roadways.
So these are relatively small dollar amounts, a lot of them to fix?
Correct, correct, and it's eighty percent funded, so...
Can we get those lists?
Yes, I will get you that list, yep, yep.
Is one of those wheels, Roads Josephville Road on this project?
No, Josephville Road is an SDP project that County Highway is doing, so it is already under, passed along in this process.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Appreciate it. That gets us to bill fifty-four forty.
Bill fifty-four forty, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving an agreement with East-West Gateway Council of Governments to conduct planning services and develop a detailed vision and conceptual plan for the Missouri Great Streets Route Inn Corridor in St. Charles County.
Any questions or comments about this? Mr. Elman, I believe this is what you were talking about.
It was held here at the next meeting.
Earlier in the meeting, so it'll be good to hear about that. That gets us to bill fifty-four forty-one.
Bill fifty-four forty-one, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving a cost-share agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for participation in the commission's cost-share program.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, fifty-four forty-two.
Bill number fifty-four forty-two, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance approving execution of a congestion mitigation and air quality agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County and the cost of the commission's public improvement for arterial management interface for the routes.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Yes?
Yeah, Amanda, what is this? I mean, I've been out of the engineering field, I guess, a while, I don't know what GGL is.
Yes, no, so...
And the brain life... Green light program.
This is supporting Gateway Green Light, and this is a project to go back through, which we've sort of done before, but go back through all of our arterial timing plans if there is an incident on the highway or a MODOT route.
So this is the change of timing of the signals?
Yes. Yep, to divert traffic more efficiently.
I just wasn't clear. Thank you.
Before you leave, and I'm sorry to ask you off the top of your head, do you know how many awards that we've won for the Gateway Green Light Program?
Oh, gosh. We won one, well, we've won two for emergency vehicle preemption, and we've won before that a couple just for GGL in general. So...
These are national awards that Gateway Green Light has gotten since you asked the question. And it's, are we now in all the first responder cars?
I believe so.
We're in the...
Well, not police, but...
I believe we're in the fire service.
Yes.
Chief, are we in all the, our county cars?
I don't know. It's not quite 100%, but most are.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, the great thing about that is when they approach an intersection, the traffic light changes to allow those emergency vehicles to get through, because they found out that, especially with fire service, one of the biggest places that they're going to have an accident with ambulance and fire trucks is at those intersections. So it changes the light, it moves them through, and it gets them to you as quickly as they possibly can. So it's why, if you ever talk to Kyle Gaines at the ambulance district, he will tell you, it's why we have some of the fastest response times for SCAD in the entire country, that our ambulance and fire department get to our citizens faster than almost anywhere else. So thank you very much for that. That gets us to bill 5443.
Bill number 5443, requested by Steve Elman and Ryan Graham, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement and other related documents between St. Charles County and the St. Charles City-County Library District in furtherance of the creation of the Heritage Museum Archives and Local History Genealogy Center.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Joanne, do you want to say anything about this partnership with the library and the Heritage Museum? Well, I don't know. Steve, you may want to talk about it.
Yeah, I guess just a little, a little background for everyone. This Heritage Museum, of course, you're all familiar with it. I think it's a great asset that, that we have. Everybody thinks it was my idea, since I love history so much, but it was actually Joe Hartworth's idea. And quite frankly, I'm a little bit disappointed that we haven't had better response to some of our exhibits that we've put there. So rather than spend additional money at this time for a new exhibit, I think what I've proposed, and Joanne can give you more details, is we work with the library and turn this into a research center for people who want to study the history of St. Charles County. And, and of course, a big part of that is going to be genealogy. And I don't know if you all realize how popular genealogy is, but I come on, on the board for the State Historical Society, and it's unbelievable how many people use their resources in, in Columbia to do genealogy. I just want to make sure that they're available here. Joanne, can you talk a little bit more about our discussions with the library?
So that the library will move its local history and... Yep. The library will move its local history and genealogy section from Kathryn Lindeman to the Heritage Museum on, on a permanent basis during the, I mean, obviously, if we end the agreement someday, they can take their stuff when they go, but we're, we're intending this to be a permanent installation. The old barn area will become a reading and research room where those materials are. And to complement that, obviously, you know, Ryan holds some considerable materials related to the history, local history of the county that materially will be available for people doing research or interested in that background. So we'll, we'll combine those resources. And that only not, not only frees up some space for the library district, which is their interest at Kathryn Lindeman, which is a very space-limited location and a very popular location of the library district. But it gives us the start of, again, a really unique park location where our combined staffs will be able to do programs on local history and genealogy. And we are already looking at some combined things, like they will have a ancestry location for citizens to access into ancestry without cost. And hopefully then do things, some things like for people to come in and record their local histories and be able to take that with them and hopefully leave us a copy, but it's not mandatory, as others research, you know, a common background and history with the county. So it's a, it's again, a really unique opportunity and location where we can dedicate that building that was really bought, the history of the county, to an ongoing purpose.
Sounds like a good idea.
The remaining rooms in, in the old house would still be available if we, if we came across something really interesting, you know, some artifacts or some things we want to kind of let people know are out there, we, we could still do smaller exhibits there, less expensive and, and, and smaller. So I, I think it's, I think it's a good step in the right direction. It's going to save us some money, and, and it's going to really make kind of a one-stop shop for people who want to come and, and do research.
Love the partnership. That gets us to announcements and miscellaneous. Councilwoman York?
I had one, and this is for my fellow councilpeople. I have, one of the things we talked about in our visioning meeting was doing some kind of a welcome packet for new council members. It's something I just started on. But I gave you each a outline, a general outline of things I think we should put in there. What I want you to do is just take it home, scribble all over it. What, what did you want to know? You know, what were some of the first things you wanted to know? And it pretty much just kind of lays out what should be in the packet, and then what we should do in the beginning to make people feel welcome, because, you know, you, you're elected, and then all of a sudden it was like all the things you thought you could do, you can't, and all the things you thought you couldn't do, you can. So please just look it over and then just get it back to me, and we can then give it to staff, and we can work through it and hopefully have something to show people.
Sounds good. Dave?
Mr. Deanhop, for your information, everything you got up there and said about me is a lie.
No.
Number one, listen to me. I listened to you.
You interrupted me. You listened to me and saved a pass.
Mr. Deanhop.
I didn't, my wife is not on my county health insurance, and I don't get loggers.
Served 12 years up here. I don't get a cent of loggers. Mr. Deanhop. I worked 26 years for local government, and I get a pension from loggers, and it's $1,800 a month. I get Social Security, and I get $20,000 to be on this council. When I last figured it up, it's less than minimum wage for the time I put in. So get your facts straight if you're going to come up and badmouth somebody.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
I got some comments. I agree with Dave 100% too. His facts are always wrong. On the septic tank issue, you're 100% wrong. You have no idea what you're talking about. It's going to benefit a lot of people who have lots that are not available to put septics on when they should be, because it's just a glitch in the ordinance. I ran through the process because I had to go through it. I couldn't change it prior to doing it. I got my variances. I got my engineers. I paid a waste a lot of money on following the procedures that we have, and then they changed the law because they realized it was wrong. That's that.
Now, I've got two other comments.
Sure.
All right. So if you guys watched the news a couple of weeks ago, there's these things going on in St. Charles County. I talked to the chief about this several times. They're called, they're called flash mobs. It was on the news, and it was all over Facebook. And these kids, in this one particular instance, is Preston Woods, and this kid was, had some, he's, was going to have five or 10 people who watch football. It gets on the SnapChop thing, SepChap, whatever the hell you call it, and they, they got all over social media, and there were 200 kids in the house, and they're, they just destroy. They go in the house, they're breaking the windows, ripping the Cory tile, or the countertops off, throwing stuff through the TVs. It's all on video. And all these kids, you know who they all are. And the excuses I've got from law enforcement and prosecutor, well, they're juveniles, and it's not our police department's fault. It's, and I, I do believe the county's a little more aggressive than O'Fallon and Lake St. Louis. But in this particular case, they had two police cars show up. In Lake St. Louis, there was a jurisdictional dispute, because it's all spot, you know, zoning, Lake St. Louis, O'Fallon, St. Charles County. It's all three jurisdictions. And two cops go up. They say they can't do nothing, because there's 200 kids there, and they really couldn't, because there's only two cops there, because they didn't know what to expect. And then later, and a kid, a chair gets thrown, a kid gets a serious head injury, and then O'Fallon gets involved, because now the detective's involved. There has been no arrest made, and I get it. I know it takes time. I get it. But this is unacceptable, 100%. There should be a jurisdictional task force involved on this. When there's a call come out, and these kids are vandalizing houses, like the fifth one, we had a police sergeant just happened to. That's what I was told. This is like the fifth house that's been destroyed in St. Charles County. We cannot have this kind of stuff going on in our county and think it's acceptable. We cannot have excuses saying they're juveniles, we're pissed off on the system. That is unacceptable. So something needs to be done, and something needs to be done now. These kids are, they videotaped this, and they're jumping all over the house, destroying it, punching holes in the drywall. These are nice houses. It doesn't matter if it's a nice house or not. It's vandalism, it's destruction of property, it's, it's trespassing. There's all kinds of charges and assault. So that's that. We need to do something about that.
We'll do an open session with the administration, starting at 5:30, and we'll go through the, start going through the budget. Normally, at that meeting, I believe, is when we ask for elected officials, if they want to come and speak about the budget. We normally do that as a courtesy to all elected officials.